Welcome to the four o'clock work session for October 2nd, 2012 Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Our work session has three items on the agenda today. Mr. DeFebo will let you begin.
Thank you, Mayor. As the population of Bowling Green, Kentucky and the nation surges to being over fifty, it creates special needs for everybody of that age group. We're here today to hear about an exciting proposal from Kentucky AARP. Ms. Patrice Blanchard is here to detail a program they want to do here in Bowling Green to learn more about our needs. Karen Foley is also here and they're coming, bringing money also to help us find out what the needs are here.
Come on down.
Hello, I'm Karen Foley, Neighborhood Services Coordinator for the City of Bowling Green. And Mayor Wilkerson, you may remember at a Bee Gees can rally back in January, we had, Patrice was here with some of our neighbors and we were starting to talk about the idea of doing a citizens academy for residents. One of the folks that we've been working with is Donna Woods and some of you may have met her before. Donna is actually one of our founding members of our Bowling Green Coalition of Active Neighborhoods. She's been our neighborhood rep over on Sandra Street ever since I have started this job and she's really good to work with and she's actually the person who put me and Patrice in contact with one another. And we're continuing to work with Donna. She's not here today. She's actually preparing for another community event, also to benefit, in particular, folks who are dealing with hearing loss. So she's not here, but she sends her regards. We are also working closely with Dr. Dana Bradley at WKU Center for Aging. She is fall breaking this week, as many folks are, but she is also assisting us with this project, both with some student staff and also with her expertise as we put together the citizens academy. I myself have participated in the citizens police academy and the citizens fire academy and I think what we are putting together by way of a citizens academy for the fifty over fifty is going to be a nice complement to those existing programs. And basically what we want to do is give our residents an inside look, a behind the scenes look, at our city programs and services and how those affect the livable community that we have here in Bowling Green. And at this time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Patrice Blanchard. She's the Associate State Director for Community Initiatives for AARP Kentucky.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you to all of you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you about this today because it's really exciting. I've not seen anything like this as comprehensive as this is anywhere else I've ever worked and I've been with AARP for sixteen years. So I really think this is a chance for the citizens of Bowling Green to truly gain insight into city government and explore what living in a community that's age-friendly means. And we're here today to ask for the commission's approval to proceed with this event. It would be cosponsored by AARP Kentucky and the City of Bowling Green Neighborhood Services Department with the support of WKU Center for Aging. Why would we want to do this? Well, because Bowling Green was the very first southern city to receive admission to the World Health Organization Age Friendly Cities Network and part of that admission means that you will come up with a plan and you will involve your older citizens in the plan for becoming an even more livable community than you are. And everything that Karen has come up with on the agenda, which we're going to pass out to you in just a moment, will help older citizens become more active and engaged in community organizations as well as civic life. And we think it's really going to increase pride in city services because I would bet money at the end of this, you're going to get comments like, wow, I had no idea the city had so many services. There's just not normally a way a one person would be exposed to all of the range of services that you have. They may know something about some, but certainly not all. The application's going to be really simple. If you're a citizen of Bowling Green, we prefer you to be over age fifty, but if we don't fill the slots, and the fifty over fifty means fifty individuals over age fifty, then we would open it to anyone of any age. First come, first served. We're going to date stamp them when they bring the applications into Karen's office and of course, no cost to participants. AARP is going to offer sponsorship of the money so that this could, can take place. The agenda, Monday through Thursday, October twenty-second through twenty-fifth, would basically be eight-thirty in the morning to four o'clock and Karen's going to give you a copy of the draft agenda of all of the different places people will be taken, exposure they will get to the various departments. And then on Friday, we will have a community conversation, an Ask Bowling Green Community Conversation, which will be facilitated by AARP-trained volunteers designed to get input about the visioning that they, the participants have after seeing all of the current city services. And then there would be a graduation lunch and we would dismiss at two. So what we're asking you today is to approve the event, to help us get applicants because we need to have an application deadline of October fifteenth since October twenty-second's not very far away. And of course, we would like to have you attend the graduation lunch and that would be on the last day of the academy. So with that, that's a brief overview. Are there any questions that Karen or I could answer for you?
Yes, ma'am. Because we just got this outline, but tell me, if you would, what is the purpose of the academy?
The purpose is really to just give citizens, older citizens, a real insight into city government and city services and to help them learn about what the components of a livable community and age-friendly community are. The World Health Organization has come up with a list of things that they believe help people age in place. They don't have to go to live in nursing homes because they have services or they understand how to change their homes to live longer in where they live now. And it would just be to talk about all of those kinds of things and to gain pride in all of the city services that you already offer.
Is this program related in any way to the Clinton World Health Initiatives and so on?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I'm not really familiar with those, so I'm sorry. As far as I know, it's pretty standalone and Karen, with, we've been meeting Donna and Karen and Dr. Dana Bradley and I to talk a little bit about the agendas and what all should, could be included. So I think it's, it may not be a total brainstorm by us, but, but we think it's fairly creative on our end, not copying it from somebody else. It really would be what I consider to be an example, to hold up to other cities around the country for what you're doing to involve your older citizens and help keep them active through the end of their lives.
Part of the purpose, Joe, I believe, is to provide the wisdom from those who have been here a long time, kind of like you.
Thanks.
Help out to, maybe we can tailor our services a little better, too.
Okay.
The only other thing that I wanted to mention is we've constructed this basically around day one. They are going to get the full-blown, this is how the budget works. This is how funding streams come in and of course, Katie is going to, she's bringing the big guns with information so that people can understand, well, what goes into a budget? How do those decisions get made? Where are these sources of funding going? Where are those funding coming from? Then we'll have two days where we're actually touring the different departments and seeing an overview of how those departments function, maybe the kinds of equipment they use. Well, why does it cost so much? Why does a fire truck cost so much? Those sorts of things that are basically a practical glimpse at the real-world work of our city employees. So they'll get to tour the police department. They'll get to see fire trucks and equipment. They'll get to go out to the sign shop and see, you know, how big a traffic signal is. People don't realize how much those items cost. And there will be one day in the middle of the week that's going to be focused on things that people encounter as they age and what are programs and services that are available to them out in the community to keep them self-sufficient, in contact with other people, contributing to community. And then on the last day, of course, we'll have the community conversations and that will be a good time to say, okay, now that you've seen all this, now what? You know, and so that as they have those conversations, they're starting from a place of, wow, I've really learned a lot about our community and what our city as an organization is doing to make it livable for us. And then, of course, they'll graduate and take pictures and have lunch and hopefully enjoy that time with, with each other also. That's another component is hopefully the people who participate will be able to share stories about Bowling Green. They'll have plenty of time on the bus or during break times or during discussions to kind of, because there are folks that maybe have retired here in Bowling Green, but they, they came here from somewhere else. So it'll be nice to have them matched with people who've lived in Bowling Green all their lives and share that camaraderie and some of that information about our community with one another.
So based on the participation of the academy class one, if things goes, go pretty well, then it is our intent to have one every so often. Is this correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we would love to see that happen. We don't have a, we aren't trying to commit you to that. We just want you to commit to this one, but if it goes great, yeah, I mean, why wouldn't we keep doing it? I would hope we would.
Speaking of that, they have offered $4,000 to underwrite the cost of the day, of the two-day event. So I have a contract here that authorizes me to sign it since it's under five, under $20,000 for a one-time payment of $4,000, which is sufficient to put on the, the event for those two days. So unless there is an objection, I, I thought we would take the money.
Sounds great to me.
I was going to say, I don't hear any objections from anybody.
When will this application be? Is it available now?
We will, once Mr. DeFebo can sign the agreement, then I have permission to use their logo on the application and we can make that available almost immediately, actually. Now, this that I've given you is a draft because we are still tweaking times and solidifying some, some content and speakers and that sort of thing, but that will firm up as we get closer to the time. But absolutely, the application that I gave you with the, the general schedule on the back, we could make that available probably on the website at least today and then going forward tomorrow and the next day.
I noticed in the draft proposal, you said on the application, the dates would be listed for the participants. It's not yet. Are you planning on adding that before? It gives a tentative schedule, but unless I'm overlooking it, I do not see the dates.
I can add that, I can add that on there with the dates.
All right, Ms. Blanchard, thank you for coming. Thank you for bringing the donation. We'll see how everything goes. We'll put a good effort into it.
One part of it's to let me come and be with you guys that week and I'm really excited to learn about all of the good things you're doing in your city. So thank you very much.
Karen, can I get a copy, please? Can we get a copy?
Karen, one more question. Citizens can apply online or in person, correct?
We're going to put the application online where they can print it out and they can, they can email it.
Okay, but they have to bring it in. Okay.
They can email it or fax or any of those sorts of things. If I can figure out a way to get it on there quickly using Survey Monkey or something like that where they can register online and if I can have it time stamped, then I will try to do that as well.
We certainly hope you'll encourage anybody you know over age fifty to apply.
We've got a couple up here that
Pull it out of the file.
I think it's unanimous.
They can go on and apply right now.
If I can just say many thanks to Karen and Mr. DeFebo and all of you for helping with this because I do think that it's a great service to our citizens over age fifty. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, our next item, Mr. DeFebo.
Mayor, can we defer to number three? The group from the marathon isn't here yet. I thought it would time out a little differently. But Jeff is here and Melissa and others to talk about our 2013 stormwater and sidewalk program. Jeff?
Good afternoon. A couple priority programs with the commission in the past has been stormwater mitigation and sidewalk construction and tonight, we're going to talk about those. Melissa will be talking about stormwater and Carol Hunt will be talking about the sidewalk program. The, both of them are going to go into a little bit of detail. We've got a mechanism for evaluating these projects. We get a number of projects over the year and this is our yardstick and how we measure those and, and the highest scoring would be what we're presenting to you tonight and would seek your recommendation to go forward with those. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa.
Yeah, Melissa Cansler, city engineer from Bowling Green.
Thanks for allowing us to present. We do this each year and I'll do the stormwater mitigation program. I want to start off with a little background. This kind of came about in 2010 and shortly thereafter the May storm event that weekend where we got ten-plus inches of rain. That year alone, we had fifty-two rain events, many road closures, a lot of impact to private property. Last year, we reported forty-four rain events and with those, there were 400 associated drainage service requests. Now, those requests come from, you know, calls into Karen and, and her people through you guys directly to our office, some things we just see passing by. And I'm not saying these didn't, these flooding events hadn't been happening, but it just seems like we're getting more and more calls for assistance. Before I go into the program, I would like to talk a little bit about our in-house efforts. Bobby Skye's down at Ops do a great job. Where they're capable, they do a lot of these projects themselves. Sometimes time is a restriction. They can't commit a crew for, you know, months on end and equipment maybe as well. But last year alone, they completed 178 non-maintenance requests and drainage-related. And what those are, are not your typical maintenance issue. Maybe it's a new ditch, a new pipe or infrastructure to solve a problem. Beyond that, they do a lot of maintenance response. This could be cleaning out structures, dry wells, clearing grates. Oftentimes after rain events, they go out and clear the grates where things have washed up in them. Typically, there's about 1,100 structures they routinely maintain. Additionally, maintenance efforts we look at are also leaf pickup. The more leaves we pick up, the less there are in our gutters and get down in our drains and clog pipes, as well as street sweeping. Last year alone, they collected 447 tons of debris from our streets, street sweeping activities. And finally, some of the projects that we get calls on, we go out and look at, go on our storm mitigation lists, but after looking at it more closely, oftentimes Ops can complete. And some of the things that they have done this year are, we respond to a lot of sinkhole repairs with our carst. And increasingly, we have more and more ditching projects throughout town and that's where maybe in the older subdivisions, the ditches have silted in, causing drainage problems and, and we need to go reform those and maybe install new pipes. And then your typical low spots, kind of corrections and maybe stabilization. Most recently, they have repaired a pump at the Fourth and Chestnut intersection that's kind of been down for a few years. Got that back up and running. I think there's a few more problems, but we worked with the pump manufacturer and Ops to save some money there. So, yes.
What happened with the hole down there?
At Fourth and Chestnut, from what I understand, a number of years ago, the pump just went out and the pipe
No, I'm talking about now, the, the hole that's there now.
Some of the problems we ran into, the infrastructure had been in place so long, some of the pipes. When we got the pump up and running again, they weren't able to take the, the pressure. So they're having to repair some of the, the pipes in place, as I understand it. I think they have those parts on order and that's just awaiting that to come in.
I was asked about that same spark, Mayor, Saturday morning and
It was working fine. I think we just shocked the system.
They were joking about a car going down through there and getting lost. It was so deep.
It carries a lot of water and it just has, hasn't been working for a number of years, but we did, we, we had that on our mitigation list. If you, if you notice the full list and it came off because we did that in-house. Okay, now to the mitigation program. Again, it was established in 2010 and we just needed a way, as we were getting these drainage complaints in, that we could not address with in-house resources, a way to kind of score them against each other, decide which ones had merit and which ones we could afford. Since that time, we have an annual budget of $500,000, which we have again this year. Thank you. And real quick again, service requests come in, especially the drainage, we go out and look at them immediately because we like to see the, you know, the flooding in the process or the problem while it's occurring. If it's a safety issue, we take immediate corrective action. If it's a maintenance issue, it goes on operations priority list. And then again, if it's a larger project where we need more research or design, it goes on our storm mitigation list. The prioritization factors, we've shared these before. We look at four things primarily. How is the public impacted? The road closures? How many properties are impacted? How severely are the private properties impacted? Are they, is the yard disflooded? Are their houses flooded? How often has that region or that area been impacted? Have they called us three times, four times? And finally, how much the project we anticipate the cost to fix? Here's a detailed outline of those factors. Obviously, if the road is closed and many properties are affected, they're going to get more points. Private property impact and the severity. A living space that's impacted is going to get more points than if somebody's crawl space is impacted or if they simply just have water standing in their yard. Frequency, as I discussed, and ultimately the cost. And at the level that we look at these, we do a programic kind of level estimate. We, we think what it might take to fix and we put some numbers to that, but we really don't know until we get to the design and get, get down to that. Some recent projects, just wanted to go through these to show where we put our money the past couple of years. South Park Drive, we completed that in March. Final cost was just over 207,000. We involved the neighborhood as well as our golf division because it did impact the golf course. There's pictures before construction, that South Park Drive looking back towards Covington. Then you have a picture of the golf course flooded and then also I don't have a picture showing there's a residential area on the other side that had some flooding as well. And here is one picture afterwards. We used a series of drainage basins and dry wells to kind of get that water off the road and we worked with the golf closely so that it would mesh with their, their golf, the course there. Covington Street Basin is substantially complete. The only thing lacking is our landscape. They are supposed to be putting that in this week where they're permitting. Final cost, 517,000. Here are some nice pictures from May of 2010. That's looking down Covington towards Hampton and again, the street was closed for several days. Houses were impacted. And then around the corner on Batzel, by the Batzel Sink, that road was closed also and several properties impacted by that. So here's a picture we took just the other day of, again, it's before we put in our landscape. We'll have some plantings in front of the fence and then some trees on the backside along the slope, along the fence and then, then down in the basin. And we did notice yesterday that we have an overflow for Batzel. It's actually, as Batzel gets so high, it's, it's running into this basin. So that's working as we anticipated. So that was good news.
What was, and I don't mean to break anything, you may already have it given to, what was our budgeted figure for each one of those going back to South Park Drive as an example? What did we say it was going to cost us?
What we had originally, we had 500,000 per year. So in FY11, we started with our South Park, which I think the contract is, was in right around 200,000. We had some changes. We knew we were not going to get Covington in for that remaining three. We knew that when we awarded the contract, but it ran over into FY12, so we just used some of FY12's money and funding. So we still have some FY12 money left to go into this next year's project as well. The project we are most recently completing is the Audubon Glen Lilly Force Main. For those of you who aren't aware, there was a low spot on Audubon near Glen Lilly. Historically held water. Jeff said that it's been holding water for years. We installed a pump station to pump that water up Glen Lilly into the Hammond Circle Basin where we made some improvements there. That project is substantially complete. We're closing out the contract now and it's actually going to come in just a little less than that. So. And finally, proposed projects, yes?
Can I add one point? On the Covington Street, you have a construction figure, but as you know, that project goes back decades where we've been acquiring properties for a number of years to make the basin big enough so that we could, we would have to do some plumbing, get the final cost of all the property acquisition as well as construction. I think that, Joe, you're on the commission, I know.
Yeah, I understand. I was, the only reason I was asking was that I thought that our planning and our budget, we weren't going to be going over any great amounts and that's what it shows.
That one, yeah, it did go, I think the original contract was, it was over five, not by much, but it was over five. But fortunately, we still had some FY11 money and then we used some FY12 to, to complete that project. For our proposed, you have a complete listing of the projects in the queue in front of you. I'm just showing the top 10 here. What we do every year at the beginning of the FY, we look back at the previous year to see how many calls we got for projects that qualify for the stormwater mitigation program. This past year, we only found two new ones and, and when I say new, they weren't new. Once we got to look in, they had already been reported in the previous past. So our list did not change. We're going with the top two that were next in line from last year. Small House Ridgecrest intersection is an ongoing problem. It was, I think, first flooded in 98 or first occurrence that I'm aware of was 98 hailstorm. It impacted the traffic for, I think, several days, also some private property. Oliver Street, similar case. I think the last reported event was last November, but it has been reported multiple times. It has flooded the street, closed the street and impacted more than one property. So both of those, you know, we don't have anything firm design-wise, but we're going to have to get that water and take it, take it elsewhere. So those are our two projects that we have proposed. If you have any questions?
Mayor? I know it's not one of our projects, but it's in, within the city limits. What is the status of the Russellville Road water situation there in front of the old State Farm Office Building and so on?
I know they improved that. Has it flooded of late?
I don't know.
I think they, they remediated that.
It's my understanding, and I don't know the date, that they have done some repairs there. I haven't been out that way during a good rain, so I couldn't tell you how it's working, but I haven't heard the complaints that I would use to hear about that. So, and, and they did some project there. I couldn't tell you exactly what the state did, but they did put some effort into it.
It was like an ocean out there.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm looking at the projects and I understand I don't have any problem this year, next year's where it looks like we might run into some issues. I'd hate to set the amount of money we had aside for three years to save up for a big project when we've got so many others that we can knock out. I mean, at $50,000 apiece on several of those, we could knock out 10 in that year.
What are, with the sidewalk program, what we typically do, of course, it's a little different because the magnitude of it, it's not quite so great. We move down to the ones we can afford until, so the larger ones, the one, two million dollar projects may become a greater or a different type of project to solve.
Plus on number four, we may be working a little bit on that as we speak.
I think, I think that, you know, they are installing some basins there. I think they can't hurt. The problem we have there on number four, it's a little bit further down from that, where that's going in. The solution's not going to be easy there.
No, it's not.
You talking about coming back towards Nashville Road?
It impacts, it's quite a distance and several properties there, including the road.
In our matrix, don't we reward projects that are less costly? In our matrix, don't we reward, uh, projects that are less costly?
Yes, if they are within budget, well, it's based on amount, they get more points, the lesser they are. Any questions? If not, I'm gonna let Kyle take over sidewalks.
Thank you, Melissa, good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. As Melissa said, we're also here this afternoon to present recommended locations for the FY thirteen sidewalk construction program. And before I talk about specific projects, I'd like to go over some of the, uh, inner workings of the program itself. And again, this will be brief and we we go over this every year, nothing within the program has changed itself, we'd just like to give you all, uh, just a a brief update. The purpose of the sidewalk program was to address a, uh, commission priority of improving pedestrian access or walkability throughout the city. Uh, the program was adopted in August of two thousand and seven and since that time, we have constructed or there is pending construction just over thirty-nine thousand linear feet or roughly seven and a half miles of sidewalk within the city. And this year is the same as last year as far as budget and we have four hundred thousand dollars to work with. Uh, again, this year, we look at, uh, five criteria, uh, in order to score, uh, potential sidewalk locations. With the higher scoring projects obviously receiving higher priority. Doing it, uh, this method helps us to establish an order of construction and gives us somewhat of a structured manner, manner of approaching these projects rather than just randomly going out and picking locations for construction. And then again, this year, as with the past several years, locations with existing sidewalk already on one side of the street were not included within the program. Here are the five criteria that we look at when scoring a potential sidewalk, uh, project. We look at connectivity, uh, does a potential project close a gap within the existing sidewalk network? We look at location, is a potential project close to high pedestrian traffic areas such as schools, bus stops, things of that nature? Uh, we look at a financial component, is there the potential that a project may be funded by some outside source? We also look at technical feasibility, uh, this is basically how easy a location is to construct. Uh, with this, we look at items such as what drainage impacts, uh, might be encountered during construction. If there are any utilities that would need to be relocated or any physical obstructions in the way that would have to be removed during construction. And then also, we look at walkability. Locations such as Scottsville Road or Russellville Road, uh, what we call collectors, would receive a higher score from a safety standpoint as compared to, say, a, uh, a local, uh, residential cul-de-sac. And then for any, uh, projects that are tied in score, the lowest estimated, uh, cost for the project would be the tiebreaker. And just to give you a brief update on some pending sidewalk projects, uh, we have seven that are in the queue. Uh, the the first five, and these are in no particular order, uh, but the first five are ready for bid. Once our new purchasing agent is brought to speed, we'll be able to get those advertised. Uh, believe Russellville Road, we have some temporary easement acquisition that will need to take place, but that shouldn't keep us from bidding the project. And then the last two, Ogden and Lehman, are currently in design.
Uh, go down, let's see. Number seven, it just kind of catches my eye. Uh, Eastwood Street, what are you gonna do on Eastwood Street, on which side?
If you're going, if you, if you're going toward Covington and Wakefield, uh, the project is on Lehman, it would be on the left side of Lehman. Starting at Eastwood and going to Wakefield. As you go away from the bypass, it would be on the left.
Okay. Yeah, um. Do you have any idea when that one is gonna, uh, start?
Uh, like I said, both the Ogden and Lehman projects are in design, we hope to have those finished by the end of the month and then those will be ready for bid. And then from there, a lot of it depends on property acquisition. Uh, there will be some, some, uh, probably temporary easements as well as personal property, uh, within right of way with that, that would have to be required. And then after that, it probably later in the year, first part of next year, depending on weather. If we had a mild weather or mild winter like we had last year, then we may be able to start sooner.
Reason I ask that question is that the property at, uh, Eastwood and Lehman is getting ready to change hands. Uh, the Williams property and, um, we don't know what's gonna take place there, the reason I was asking.
I I think what we're proposing for that, uh, there's a lot of on-street parking right there, so I think what we're gonna do is there's a section of curb and gutter that starts about mid-block between, I believe, Eastwood and Magnolia, so we would start there.
Yeah, there there is parking, but the problem with the parking is if you come to the Eastwood stop sign. You can't see to the left because all of them are lined up, uh, vehicles there at this house that is getting ready to be sold, uh, next couple of days.
Right, and and that's something that we can look at in in design.
Okay.
On number four, Collet Lane, which side of the, uh, street is the sidewalk going?
That will be on the left side you're going. Yeah, if, yes, if you're going from Wakefield to Covington.
And the reason for that?
There was a lot of drainage issues on the other side, I believe there's a a pretty steep bank right there as well as several large trees, uh, that will have to be dealt with. From a construction standpoint, it was easier to construct on the other side.
I know when we were doing the, uh, stormwater, um, talked to a number of neighbors around there and they were concerned. Of course, a couple of them wanted it on one side and a couple of them wanted it on the other side.
Right.
So it had mostly to do with drainage issues.
It did, it did, and and we are gonna put curb and gutter, uh, in as well, along with the sidewalk, so what that'll do, it will channel it onto Covington and around to the basin.
Okay, so the kids will walk from school up the sidewalk and obviously still have to have that crossing guard there.
The crossing, yes, sir.
To cross that bit.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, and with that, here are the proposed, uh, locations for FY thirteen. Uh, they are Weston Street, Ashley Circle and Catherine Drive for a total project length of almost five thousand feet. And then again, as with the past several years, construction is along one side of the road only. Don't have the pointer up here, but here for the, on the Weston Street location down at the bottom left, you can see where we would be tying in close to Highland Way to existing sidewalk. And then we would, uh, complete that up at the intersection with Ashley Circle. And then the Ashley Circle project would pick up where the Weston project leaves off, go along Ashley Circle to Scottsville Road.
There's been a number of people that have mentioned that to me, that'll make a lot of people happy, I think.
And then the final location is Catherine Drive. Uh, this completes a segment, we have the Holly Drive location proposed in FY twelve, uh, down at the bottom of the screen. And then it connects to the, I believe that was the Safe Routes to School project several years ago along Catherine and Dennis. And then ultimately, that would connect to the Old Morgantown Road corridor, just to the north of the area.
How, how do we, how are we faring with the sidewalks around the schools? I know that was a priority and I may have missed the first part.
It is, that that's included in the scoring criteria, uh, we look at at locations close to schools, parks, bus stops.
So how are we doing?
I believe we're doing fairly well, uh, I believe at least almost every location has a school within close proximity. Uh, of course, you know, you look at the Collet Lane, we have Potter Gray right there, uh, things of that nature. Yeah, I believe we're doing an adequate job of addressing, uh, accessibility to schools.
Is there anything out there that, um, no, that's okay, I haven't, that's good.
Under location, the scoring criteria is twenty points and that's just another metaphor for schools.
Right.
In our opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, schools, parks, bus stops.
That's good.
High, high pedestrian traffic areas.
The highest point is twenty-five for connectivity, meaning that if, using Bruce's theory, if we have a small piece left and we can finish that sidewalk, it's score at the highest.
Right.
Like with stormwater, we can do smaller projects.
Right, and and locations that would effectively take someone to nowhere are are scored lower, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kyle.
I appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome.
Our last agenda item is, uh, something that I probably won't participate in.
Mayor and Commissioner, uh, we're here today to, uh, talk about a exciting proposal, uh, from Ms. Lily Wheat and her, uh, associates to bring, uh, a Bowling Green's first marathon. My office as well as Police Department and others, uh, including Public Works have been working with, uh, Ms. Wheat's Marathon Committee. And we thought it was important for this to be brought forward to the public and, uh, present the time, the plan and, uh, what will happen. I think Lily's gonna be presenting on behalf of John Deane, maybe? From the Police Department, we have, uh, two officers, Officer Bowles and Officer Hyde, who have been involved in the planning.
Captain Bowles and Major Wright.
Go ahead.
I've just, I've got, this is the same thing that, 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 um.
Lily, give us your name and who you're representing so everybody at home knows what's going on. Talk to the microphone.
Talk to the microphone.
Yeah.
I am Lily Wheat, I'm with Tracks Running, we're the, uh, running store over there at Caryacus that we've been in the building for a year now. And we have decided to, along with the help of the city and other organizations, put on our first marathon here in town. It is gonna be on Sunday, November the fourth, we're actually starting at the Bowling Green Ballpark. And that is basically the logo, all the proceeds that we've got coming from this race will go to MS. As some of you all may be aware, I lost my sister that's four years older than me to MS at the age of forty-eight, which is about seven years ago. Is this what I use? How do I click this thing? Gotcha, okay. Um, what we've got here, basically like I said, we're starting where the green thing is, that is the ballpark. This is a two-loop course to make the marathon, which is twenty-six point two miles. Uh, one loop will get a half marathon, because it's easy to do marathons and half marathons together, we're opening it up for both. That way, a lot more people participate in the half than they will the full. As you see, it comes up center, it goes around campus. Um, I've sat in with, um, Carrie and Jeff and we've got officers filled for the part that goes through campus. Goes all the way up downtown and comes out Fairview and goes out Ironwood and then back down and comes back in loop. The next page is actually the turn-by-turn directions, so they're very specific, um, it goes all the way through there. Uh, it's a semi-challenging course until you get to Fairview, which we want to do that, just to make people that run a marathon really need to hurt when they get finished. Uh, we have been in contact with Ryan and and Brad over at the Hot Rods and working with them on finalizing the details for the beginning and the ending of the marathon there. The next one shows us the different water stations that we will have, which are the little water drops. The little green first aid looking things are gonna be our aid stations and the Porta-Johns are the little smiley faces. So there are gonna be enough facilities out there for people that have the need and when you're running a marathon like this, you do need these facilities throughout the course. At each water station, there will be, it'll be manned by at least five people. They will all have little rubber gloves on, there will all be trash cans and there will all be recyclable bins or facilities to put recyclable bottles in. Uh, and we will be responsible for cleaning everything up. We are in contact with the Porta-John facilities and that again will be our responsibility. But we do have to have that available for the public in the event that there is a crisis along the course. So as you can see, because we're doing the the two-loop, we don't have to have as many stations because they're gonna come back by and revisit that the second time. This basically is our pace chart calculation, if somebody wanna know the best and the worst-case scenario. Uh, if you had a real fast runner, he could potentially end by a little after nine-thirty. Your slowest turtle person is gonna be at the cutoff and there's a six-hour cutoff. Uh, when the, the trail vehicle comes through and if you're still on the course at six, we are picking you up. Because we can't, we can't afford to keep it on any longer than that. And and realistically, that person that will be in that yellow column is probably gonna be a walker anyway, or somebody that's just fallen by the wayside and didn't take that chance to exit at the thirteen point one mile and and we're kind of stupid enough to go that second, second loop. We do have quite a few different groups of volunteers, uh, we're gonna do those in shifts so that somebody doesn't have to man one particular area for six hours. Uh, anything on this side of, uh, Fairview will be there on post at six-thirty, anything on the other side will be there at at at, um, seven. We will have two different check-in locations for our volunteers so that they are accounted for. We know they're there, they will be identified in long-sleeved kiwi-green shirts so that everybody has got a, a color that they can easily identify marathon, I mean, uh, the volunteers. We are gonna have bicyclists, cyclists on the course, um, they're are gonna be responsible for a mile and a half of a ride. So if you're in the beginning, you've got a mile and a half, we're gonna overlap that by a half, so there is continual communications for our guys that are on the course, making sure all our runners are okay with the people that are maybe not directly on the course. So we have all that so that there's not anybody, and this in addition to, you know, what the the Bowling Green Police Department is gonna provide. So we've got some good riders that are gonna be out there for that, we've got, uh, medical personnel will be at the different aid stations. And then at any of the locations that there is not a police person, we will have a volunteer. And there are a lot of intersections that will need a live body. And of course, they will hold signs, there's not gonna be any chance of anybody getting lost. I'm not sure that we're at the point of being able to work with Public Works yet on what ideally we would like to do and Andy Rudolph is not here to help me with this. But we had kind of wanted to do some temporary painting on the streets to he- help identify the course. In the event that that can't happen and we aren't able to erect a temporary sign, they do make the little decals that are temporary and we'll get those slapped them down so that, you know, we want this to be a good visit for the out-of-towners and we do have people coming as far as from Washington State and California. So this is generating, what we want is outside of this, you know, the six county area. And that's what you will find will happen with marathons. Half marathons, your local, you know, you're gonna have more of your local bodies, but when you get into that different distance, you're gonna get a lot of people further out. The police officers, Carrie and them are gonna, uh, furnish six, which are on their particular route. And then as you can see, and this is still kind of in the, in the temporary part with Jim, we still got to finalize all that. But that's about what we're looking at as far as with them. Because we are classified as a nonprofit, since we're doing all the proceeds for multiple sclerosis, we are right at ninety-four thousand, I mean, ninety-four hundred on the, um, the expense side, which, that's okay. This is how we're gonna notify the people that are along the route and, uh, Ryan Reed has been in contact with Ms. Bobby Jo and she is giving him some information. We've still gotta finalize the data on that, but we will be sending out a postcard. Basically, it will give you the the turn-by-turn, it kind of introduce them what we're trying to do and hoping that they will be backers for it. And I know you're probably gonna hear some flack from some of them. We will be more than willing to take some of those calls if you wanna forward them to us. Uh, I know you can't make a hundred percent of the people happy, but we feel like this is something that Bowling Green is ready for and we wanna kind of go into it. Now honestly, we are, we'll be excited to have a hundred and fifty, we don't want more than two hundred participants on this first go-around. This is a trial and error for us because we want to see how we can do it and I think we can man that many people without having any major catastrophes. And that's basically our presentation as far as what I've got with Tracks.
In relationship to the ten K, when is the ten K?
The ten K is next Saturday, the thirteenth of October.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I, the problem that I've heard over the years is the runners going through neighborhoods such as, uh, Brawood. And other places like that. It's not so much of blocking the streets or running on one of the major streets as well as it is, uh, going through the residential neighborhoods. Anyways, whether it's ten K or this one. I, I don't have any problems that I want to present other than than those, I do think it's. I do think at some point in time, we'll, we need to probably take a look at our races going through neighborhoods, rather than on main drags. And I certainly can't draw out streets and roads for that purpose, not today, but I do think it's something we need to look at.
Well, with this being, of course, we're not closing, there's not gonna be part of it's closed, except that one part coming down Big Red Way on University, that one section on Western's campus, it will be closed closest to the curb on the sidewalk. It has to be, because they're going toward traffic, and Carrie and them are gonna cone that off, and that is the only part that really is gonna be closed. Everything else, everybody's either, except for that part down College where they're going the runway, they, wrong way, they will be running with traffic in the right-hand lane closest to the curb. And honestly, with the low numbers, they're gonna be so spread out, it's not gonna be like you're gonna have a mass of people going through these neighborhoods. And most of the people, when I run over in there, they're real friendly. I mean, we run, usually we have a group of five or six that run over and through there, and they just wave, and they're walking their dogs, and they're just happy to see people.
So you won't be closing the roads for the entire period of time?
No, so there were no road closures, no, sir. That's why we're having the cyclists on the roads to kind of help monitor. But everybody, and the only marathon that I've ever run that's been completely closed has been Boston. It's all, you know, you're on your own, just like when you go out today, if you go out to start running, you just gotta be road-aware of what's going on. So that's why we're putting all the extra manpower out to make sure everybody's safe.
Yes, sir. Would you all like to hear from our Police Department, because they've put a good bit of time into the science, the planning, and the safety of this event? And it might be helpful to hear from one or both of them.
I think, to address your concern about the neighborhoods, one thing I think that will benefit with the way they're putting the, planning the marathon is that no road closures. I know a lot of the residents get upset because they can't get in or out when and where they want to. Our plan is to have officers at controlled intersections.
They have a map in their book, yes.
The blue dots represent roughly where I would put an officer. And those are all controlled intersections, and that's mainly to help the runners if traffic is coming, so they don't have to wait for the red light to change. Beyond that, traffic will flow normally, so the officers on post will just watch for runners, hold traffic till the runners get through, and then let traffic go. The first stretch, where they first leave the ballpark and go up Center Street, we're gonna try to give that the initial start of the race, we're gonna try to make that as sanitary as possible as far as keeping traffic off of it, because they'll still be grouped uptight. But as they wind around Western's campus, they should start spreading out to the point that it won't be a big issue, and then certainly by the second loop, it shouldn't be a big issue. We'll also have bicyclists, bicycle officers on the stretch of One Way Street where they'll be going the wrong way, and then we'll have motor officers that will just patrol up and down Fairview in an effort to keep traffic aware that something's going on. We've talked to State Highway, and they're gonna help us out by putting signs up at either end of Fairview a week before the event, advertising the event, and then the day of the event, they'll change the message to runners on the roadway.
We did a, like a preliminary drive-through, Lily and I drove the course. It's Saturday, it's Sunday morning at 7:00, so there's not a whole lot of traffic. I mean, there'll still be traffic with people going to church, but there's no home Western game, there's nothing that seems to be going on that early in the morning, so that'll help as well, the timing.
All right, any questions?
Just to thank Lily and Jo for bringing this, and hope that it's successful. And I know everybody's done a lot of work, these are, these events are a lot of work for everybody, but thank you.
Thank you. We will take volunteers, too.
As long as they don't have to run 26.2 miles.
I thought Joe, I thought when Joe asked about the 10K, I thought he was trying to figure out how he could do the 10K, and then so soon do this, but you'll work it out, Joe.
That's exactly what I had in mind.
Me and you, me and you will work that out.
Yeah, yeah. What we may have to do is you want him running one, I run another.
Hey, I've been the trail vehicle for a number of races in this town.
You know, at the 10K, the Police Department, it's either you run it or you work it.
Yeah.
The same thing goes for here, but I think that there's not many people, maybe Kevin Wiles would be about the only person that'll actually run it and not work it.
I admire.
Well, I've seen Captain Bowles run, I tell you what, I bet she'll be in one of them.
Anything else? Thank you, Lily, we appreciate it, Penny, and appreciate you all working out all the details on that. It'll be quite an event, I'll try to make my way down there and see it. Mr. Febo, anything else?
No, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
We have an opportunity for issues that are not scheduled, do you have an issue?
The only thing I have, I apologize for being late, the only thing fast about the physicians in Nashville is that they build quickly. Everything else, I started out a doctor's appointment at 9:20 this morning, and just got back in town, so.
Had a lot to work with.
Yeah, had a lot, lot to deal with, I guess.
Okay, we'll, we'll return for 7:00 for a regular meeting.
Thanks, Joe, I appreciate that very much.